And we are live.
Okay.
Jeremiah, the podium is yours.
Is he there?
Yes. Jeremiah, are you muted? Welcome to this evening's Hear Our Voices Virtual Town Hall Meeting.
I'm not muting. I'm gonna share, I'm gonna share it to Facebook so everyone can see it and I'm gonna tag you all in.
Okay, and we are live.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Okay. The podium is yours, Jeremiah.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. How's everyone doing this evening?
Doing great, great.
We are fine.
Great.
Good, good. Awesome, awesome. Thank you all so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to decide to do this town hall. I believe that it is critical that we discuss the process of voting, we engage the audience.
Speak a little louder, Jeremiah. Closer to your microphone.
Okay. It is important that we...
It must be on mute.
No, can you hear me guys now?
Yes.
I gotta speak up?
Yeah.
A little, I gotta talk louder? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you still need to speak a little louder?
Okay, I'll speak loud. It is important that we engage our audience in this important conversation about voting in 2020. I believe that we have a distinguished group of panelists who are able to give us some insight about what's going on and how we as people of color can play a role in the community. So I want everyone to just take a chance and introduce yourself. We're gonna start off with Dr. Salters. Dr. Salters, go ahead and introduce yourself for us, okay?
Outstanding. Glad to be here this evening. I'm Dr. Gregory Salters. I am a law enforcement executive. That's what I do, but not who I am. I always believe that success is options, and when we're getting ready to vote out there, we have options for individuals that will be working towards our best interests and some others that may not be in tune with your best interest. So make sure that you're an educated voter, get out there and vote, and also make sure you complete your census. Because your local elections have more of an impact on your daily life than the national election. I look forward to having a conversation.
All right. Ms. Lynch, go ahead and introduce yourself to us.
Yeah, hi. My name is Ruth Carter Lynch, and I am the President and CEO of R&amp;R Business and Political Consulting. And when I'm a business and political consultant, I do community relations, I do community advocacy. I'm a 30-year corporate veteran, and I am a lifelong mentor to students throughout Broward County and the United States of America, right Jeremiah? I think I've known Jeremiah since, I've known you since, we've been together since you were in eighth grade.
Yes, ma'am.
Now you're going to get your masters. Isn't that amazing? But in any event, voting is imperative. And one thing that I want you all to know, that your vote is your superpower. Your vote is the one thing that you own, you and you alone, and you get to cast that vote for whomever and for whatever you want. So collectively, you can change the world if everybody votes. And that's what we want to do this year in 2020. And I would love for every millennial to make sure that they're registered to vote. And later on, Jeremiah, I'll talk about the different ways to vote. But we really want to hear from you all. We want to hear from you all and what your thought processes are. And Dr. Salters and I will chime in. But I want you to, I just want to say this. It is so important to have these conversations with you all because nothing happens overnight. And after, and your voices are very, very, very important to this process. Right now, because you all are going to inherit whatever the outcome is of everything that's going on.
Absolutely.
And I just, we want to make sure that you're equipped to do what's necessary in order to make sure that you're doing everything and you're doing it for the collective. Okay? And again, my name is Ruth Carter Lynch, and I am running for to be your next supervisor of elections.
Amazing, amazing, amazing. Bryce, can you hear us? Can you, are you able to speak? Are you still having some difficulties with your sound? Can you hear us? Okay. Hold on one second. Let's figure out what's going on with...
Yeah, Bryce's, Mike is muted. Okay, go to our next guest if you will.
Okay. Well, London, are you on the call, on the screen? All right, all right. Having some, a little technical issue.
There she is. That should be London.
There she is. She's coming.
All right. Okay. All right. Let me see. I need to add Zion back. All right. There you go, Mr. Zion. Mr. Zion, go ahead and introduce yourself to us. Do your introductions. Glad you're able to join us.
Okay, well, I'm Zion. I am a lifelong Broward County resident. I am currently a student at the illustrious Florida Memorial University. I'm a V Negro National Anthem, and I currently also serve as the FCD Florida College Democrats Black Caucus Co-Chair. And I believe, yeah.
Great. No, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Oh, I believe that this election is imperative. It's imperative that not only youth vote, but black youth vote, because obviously we're seeing that there is a, there's really a, we're in the fight of our lives right now. So I definitely think that's imperative that we vote and that we are putting our best foot, best foot out there to get the vote.
I agree. I agree.
I can hear now.
Okay, Mr. Bryce, can you go ahead and introduce yourself to us?
Yes, I'm Bryce Graham. I'm the Florida Regional Director for the National Action Network under the leadership of the Reverend Al Sharpton for the Central Florida Chapter.
Okay, all right, all right. London, are you there? Okay, we're gonna get some time. She'll probably pop in. And, well, let me, let me introduce myself. My name is Jeremiah Carter. I am a proud graduate of not only Broward College, but Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University. And I'm also currently presenting my masters there as well. In undergrad, I studied journalism, and I'm working on my masters in public administration. I've been involved in the political process since 2008, and that's how I met Ms. Lynch. Ms. Lynch, I met her, her husband, I met her husband. Her husband was out campaigning for her, and I liked the logo, her motto. It was, "If you want the truth, vote for Ruth." And her husband, in a pinch, voted for Lynch. And I was like, "I like that, I like that." And we connected ever since then. Ms. Lynch is someone who has played an important role in my life, and I look forward to hearing what she has to say about this election because this election in 2020 is very, very important. This is one of the most important elections, I think, in my lifetime and in y'all lifetime too. Because we have so much going on in this world right now, and so much going on in our backyard. And I believe that the way we can change what's going on in today's society is by voting. We have to change policy. We have to hold those leaders in office accountable. So my first question to you all, why is this election important to you? And we can start off with Mr. Zion.
Um, this election is important to me because I'm tired of seeing my people die on, at the hands of police and police brutality and even, um, and even just like the different rights that have been attacked under this current president. And something I do want to say, it's not just about the president. We have to make sure that we show up for elections that, other than the president, the state reps, the state senators, the SOEs, supervisor of elections are, the supervisor of election is one of the most important roles in the elect, that you'll ever see because they are the election. They're, they're who you go to when you're trying to register to vote. And if you have a bad SOE, you're not gonna be able to have a great political process. Ask Georgia. So...
What is the SOE?
Supervisor of election. But yeah, that's, that's, that's why this election is important to me.
Okay, great. What about you, Bryce? Why is this, why is this election so important to you?
This election is vitally important to me because in 2006, when this country decided to elect a president that is very incompetent to run this country, put us in the first phase of the pandemic. And so we are fighting a lethal fight. And I believe that voting will be the essential vaccine. It's important that we not only vote presidential, presidential election, but we must vote in our city. We must vote in our state because those are the elections that fight us the most, that impact us the most. So we must be geared up to vote in this time and in this season like we have never voted before. If not, we're gonna be in trouble.
I, I agree with you 100%. And that's where, and that's where we, as, as young people come in. We have to, we have to know the importance of this election because now I'm starting to hear young people say, "Well, I'm not voting." And I just want to let everyone know that this is a, this is a nonpartisan platform, and I encourage everyone to just get involved in the process. But I hear a lot of young people saying, "Well, I'm not voting. I don't see, I don't think my vote counts." And to be honest, I look, I look back and I think, "Well, I do believe your vote counts." Because if we look what happened in 2016, if a little more, if that certain section of people had gotten out and casted their vote, I think we would have been in a different situation than we're in now. And so my question to you all, and I'm gonna start with, I'm gonna let Dr. Salters answer this question. What do you say to that young person that say, "Hey, man, my vote don't count. I don't want to vote"? You know, and what do you say? Because also what I realize is some of these, these young people who are saying they're not gonna vote, they come from a family where voting isn't a thing. And I know people who, who parents don't vote. They don't vote in the primary. They don't vote in the municipality elections. They, and they, they don't show up, they do show up, but they only show up for when it's the time to vote for the president. But how can we as African Americans, because our vote is very important, how can we engage this conversation in the household? What is your message to parents that, you know, think voting isn't, they, that think their vote doesn't count?
One thing I tell them is that if your vote didn't count, it wouldn't be so many people trying to stop you from voting. Also, you have to look at it, and when we're talking with people, just like in sales, when you go to buy a car, when you go to buy a house, you have to find out what is it that interests that particular individual. So now, if I'm talking to a Jeremiah Carter, I say, "Okay, Jeremiah, what is it that you're really interested in? Are you concerned with the policing in your neighborhood? Are you concerned with the trash in the neighborhood? Are you concerned with jobs in your area? Are you concerned with the laws in your area?" If that concerns you, that is a local voting issue. That is not the president gonna come down here and send the police to your home. It's not the president's gonna determine who goes to grand juries and who serves on juries. And a lot of times, people really don't understand what happens within the system. We will do a lot of talking, but we will not be addressing the problem. I tell people, if you're really concerned with what is happening in your neighborhood, you need to vote. They wonder, "How come certain people are not charged with a crime? How come certain people get off of a crime?" That's because they are not serving on the jury. You must be a registered voter to serve on the jury. And how many of us have had friends that we know that were going to serve on jury, and they could come up with 1,001 excuses not to be on the jury and then be upset when their friend gets a certain charge? But if you aren't able to represent your, that diaspora or those individuals when they're going on trial, then what? Because the law says you're entitled to a jury of your peers. You're entitled of a jury of your peers that are mature enough and have taken the responsibility to register to vote and make the service of serving on the jury. That's what I do when I'm talking to young people. I find out, what is it that's important to you? And most young people I know have had traffic tickets, arrests, known somebody, or had things happen in their neighborhood that they wish they could change. That's dealt with with voting on the local election.
Thank you. Ms. Lynch, chime in on that.
Yeah, well, first and first, let me, let me dial back a desk a little bit and tell you why it's so important to vote down ballot and to vote in your city. The people in the cities, the state, the state representative, the state senators, these people control your water. They control your trash, and trash is a big deal, trust me. They control your roads. They control everything that you use on a daily basis. And I tell people all the time, nine times out of 10, that you'll never be going to the White House to have dinner with the president. But you can put your hand on your local politicians and your local representatives, especially your city commissioners and your state representatives. And one thing that I, I will, I want you all to really do, take the time and get to know who these people are. Understand what they're, what they're, what they're voting for, what they're for, what they stand for. Because part of the, for a long time, for a long time, we have put people in office that would not, did not have our best interests at heart. And so if you, if you don't see me, if I don't, if you don't vote for me, and let me tell you something that politicians do, because I do it too all the time. They look and see how many people are voting in what, what, what area and what district. And a lot of times, that's where they spend their time, their time and their money. Because state representatives, part of their job is to bring money back to the community. They take, they have control because even though education is a national issue, but the state controls, the control, the education dollars. So you want to make sure the people that you put in office have your best interest at heart. That's the first thing. The second thing is the people that say that, "I'm not gonna vote, that I don't want to vote," and that's a sad, it's a sad commentary because people, and I know people trying to hear, people really did die for us to have the right, right to vote. And I am a living witness because I actually marched with Dr. King during the civil rights movement. So that's the reason why when I see all of you all, everybody, I am excited to see everybody out there. I am 100% supportive of everything that you all are doing. And I think it's time for you all to do it because it's gonna affect you for the rest of your life. And, and I'm gonna tell you, this is a country of laws. And the people you put in office make those laws, right Doc?
Yes, indeed.
And you want those, and we got so many laws on the books, and the reason why we need you all to get started, we have laws on the books from 1930, 1932, that we need to get off of the books. We need to have the Congress, have Congress start working on why African Americans have, for the 14th Amendment? I think it's every 20 years, Doc, that we have to go back and they have to re, re-ratify the 14th Amendment so we can vote? That's, 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 we need to stop that. And that's, that's one of the things that I'm gonna charge, I'm gonna put on you all to start really working on, on that. That's, that's a huge, huge, we're the only people in the United States that have to have our right to vote ratified every 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that insight. You know, it's, it's, it's great to hear somebody who, who lived during that era and marched with Dr. King and seen what was going on back then, and now see what's going on in today's society. Because what's so, what's so, what's so interesting to me is while I was planning this town hall, George Floyd was still alive. And now since we...
Wow.
Now since this town hall has happened, we've lost George Floyd, we've lost Rashawn Brooks, and then we lost a young lady in Tallahassee as well. So it's, it's, this conversation is just so interesting. But there's another piece that I think plays an important role when it comes to community engagement, and that's the religious, and that's the religious section. And I believe that the churches play an important role with engaging their congregants and getting involved in community because the church... A lot of these, a lot of the big rallies back in the day used to happen at the church. The church is the safe haven. The church, because on a given day, it's, there's so many people there, and, and they want to seek change. So Bryce, I want to ask you this question. How can pastors in churches play a role in getting people actively engaged, not only in the election process, but getting involved with social justice and racism issues? Because I know from, from seeing you and observing you, Bryce, you've been everywhere. You work with Al Sharpton, you work with Sabrina Fulton. You work in that, you work in that arena of spiritual leaders. And what is one of the biggest tasks that you all are trying to do to make sure that the church plays an important role in the election process? Because I believe the church does play a huge role in this when it comes to voting.
You're absolutely correct. The church plays a, a big role in this. And I believe that we cannot, we cannot reach...
Uh-oh, we lost. Uh-oh. Your, your mic is muted.
Is it muted?
We got you.
There you are. Goodbye.
Yeah, we're good. We're good.
We cannot preach to those who we cannot reach. And so I believe that the church in this time must come to a sense of relevancy and getting people involved and getting people engaged. We have to, in the church, educate our people and particularly the younger generation on the importance of voting. I want to allude back to what Ms. Carter Lynch said, that we must get an audit to the laws and the legislation every year. Why should there be an audit for the, for the, for the IRS and there's no audit on laws that are on the books for centuries ever? And I believe that the church can play a vital role by getting at the table with those who are in, in, in authority.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Yes, and I do agree with that. Someone, like, you know, I, I love that now I'm starting to slowly see pastors getting engaged in the conversation and engaging their congregants. I personally don't think, it's nothing wrong with the pastor saying, "Hey, church," you know, on a nonpartisan base, saying, "Hey, church, it's important that you vote. You know, it's important that you, you, you listen to these leaders. These leaders come to our church. You put them in office. It's important that you listen to them. You guys vote. And not only that, when you vote for them, you hold them accountable." And I think there's not an accountability thing going on when it comes to our elected officials. So Zion, let me ask you this. What are some ways we can hold the people that we put in office accountable after they get in there? Because they make all these promises on the campaign trail. They swooze us, they coerce us, they, they, they hug us, they kiss our babies.
They kiss the babies.
And we give them money and we eat at their dinners and stuff, and they come to our churches and speak. But after they get in, it's a whole nother different ballgame. So how can we hold our elected officials accountable once they get in there, day one?
So something I hear from a lot of people, and I've heard this multiple times, I only see you every four years when it's time for election season. But I only see you every four years when it's time for me to come and get your ball. So, so we have to use, keep that same energy. Go follow up with these people. If I, if Tim Jones say that I'm gonna, that I'm gonna fix the water in your city if you make me your city councilman, I'm gonna, day one, Tim Jones, what you, what you need right now, so I can, so you can help with this promise. What can I do right now so I can help you elevate this up? What are some things, we have to be involved other than on Election Day? November, after November 6th, if whoever is elected that next day, if it's the current man in office or if it's a new person, they're gonna have some, they're gonna have some stuff on their hands that they have to work on. So we, we're gonna need to help them. We're gonna need to help those state representatives that are elected that day after so that we can, so that we can see our, the things that we want happen. We can't just expect to, just, I expect them to, "Oh, yeah, they, they remember that." We have to keep, we have to keep it on their mind. I've had, I've worked with plenty of state reps, and I've seen constituents that send them letters continuously and continuously send the letters, and those constituents get listened to. So you have to be on the forefront. You have to have a lot of, how homeowners or associations are on the forefront. So that's why their needs are met quicker. So you have to be there. You have to remember that these are your needs also. So you're gonna need them to meet those. So yeah, that's, those are some ways that you can see to it that those state reps and those different elected officials get their, meet your promises and are there.
I agree with you 100%, Zion, because let me tell you something. Our leaders, you know, all these meetings that, all the commission meetings are open to the public. All of the, a lot of these legislators tell you, "Make an appointment with me. Come and see me." I remember while I was up in Tallahassee at FAMU, you know, when we were trying to get money for one of our buildings on campus, it was to the point where those legislators knew me by name. And that's how, and that's how our people have to get. Let these people, when they see your name on the books, oh, we already know what they're here for. We gotta listen to them. That's how you gotta get with them. That's how you gotta get with those commissioners, those state reps, those local leaders. And honestly, some of them want people to come and see them because they can't always go out. They want people to come to their office and sit down with them and say, "Hey, what's going on in your community?" And I think as elected officials, they need to start doing more as well and, and holding the conversation. Because how can you serve the people if you don't know the people? And if you don't know...
Can I chime in on?
Serve the people. Yes, Ms. Lynch, go ahead.
Let me chime in on that a little bit. First of all, we are responsible to them just like they are responsible to us, okay? And if you, if you think about it, each, let's say state rep, for instance, they might have five cities. It's one of them, and it's 900,000 of you all. So it's incumbent upon us to always be in contact, always know what's going on. But side of that, they're only in session when they come back to the community, feet to the fire. As far as making sure that they're coming back and giving us the information that we need. As far as making sure that they're coming back and giving us the information that we need in order to help them out when they go back. So that's incumbent upon us as well, is to understand what the needs are in our community. And a little bit about the churches. Look, we are the church. I hear people say that a lot, the church, the building is not the church, the people are the church. And we have to do our part as well. Because if we keep saying the church, churches, the churches, the churches, we kinda make it something intangible. We gotta talk about it where we can put our hands on it. Like, we need to have, request and request that the churches have more meaning. And let me tell you what Donald Trump has done, and his was strictly political. Churches now can do more politically because he did, uh, and you can Google it if you want. He did an executive order stating that there, they will not have any problems with IRS with their 501(c)(3) if they wanted to be more political. So I, that, that would like for you guys to Google it and see. And so what, what we need to do, even though forty-five, and I don't like to call them by name, even though a lot of things that people put in place, we need to take a look at them and we need to take advantage of that too.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Lynch, I don't know if the
That I just wanted to throw that out there.
I don't know if the connection, uh, is, is, is in and out.
Did you guys, did you guys hear me?
Did you guys?
Yeah, we heard it, but it was in and out.
Did you guys, did you guys hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's, it's, okay, now, the piece about, which piece do you wanna hear talking about? The, that, uh, executive, executive order that he did?
Well, we'll go, we'll get back, we'll get, we'll get back.
Yeah, come back to me.
I just wanna make sure your connection is, I wanna make sure your connection is strong because you were, you were chiming in and out. But that, but that is, that is a good piece.
Oh, okay.
I did hear about the executive order part, part. Now, um, now, also with voting, uh, there is voter suppression. We've seen what happened in Georgia. And, and now we're seeing, was, it's, and it seemed like it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing trend. Um, and that leads into the next conversation of systematic racism. But there's more. When you, when you break down systematic racism, there's economic racism, there's the workplace racism, uh, environmental racism, and even how, how African Americans are treated. So what are some ways we can end? What are some ways you think we can end systematic racism? And how do you think we can implement policy to change what's going on? Cause I believe it's a policy issue. I believe it's a policy issue. I believe that the laws have to be changed so that people that look like us can get the resources that they need. So Dr. Salters, I want you to answer that question for me. You're mute, you're on mute. You're on mute, Dr. Salters.
Thank you. And I'll answer this and then I'm gonna throw out something that we have here that's coming up on the, um, Facebook stream. And if you all will be looking at your Facebook streams and see if there's something that comes up that you all would like to, um, have answered. Okay? One of the things you talk about is systemic racism and you talk about it being economic, you talk about it being in healthcare and everything. Let's look at it for what it is. There are systems that are in place and historically those systems have created gaps. Those have been economic gaps, those have been med, med, medical gaps. They have been all types of gaps based on the systems that have been put in place. From an economic standpoint, you've had your redlining, which therefore had certain neighborhoods to where they were only getting the substandard loans. And then when you get a substandard loan and you can't pay it, then you're into foreclosure and so on and so forth. So you have those things that come into play. And you also have it to where other times you have things that come out and it's like, wow, what has happened systemically? With the marginalized community, it seems like no matter what they do, things tend to be marginalized. You even had it with the, um, last elections when they were deciding which polling places would be closed down. These things come into play. Which ones are closed down? How are they moved? What happens in your demographics? Those things come up. So that's one of the things that we deal with. And, um, Jeremiah, if you will, may I address one of the questions that's in the, um, Facebook?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, if there's any questions that you see, please answer them and we can, and we can definitely provide some input to those questions.
Okay, and this is one from a law enforcement standpoint, it's, um, Commissioner Robert McKenzie. He posed, um, my fear is that with all the vilification of law enforcement, will they be able to effectively deter crime in the community? Broward has over seven thousand known violent crimes a year. That includes six hundred twenty-eight rapes, about one hundred murders, over two thousand robberies and over four thousand aggravated assaults. Cops made fifty-seven thousand plus arrests in this year. Can you all address this dilemma of the need to reform policing, but we also need security from criminals? One of, thank you for pointing those statistics out. Um, I'll speak on it in a general level. When we're talking about voting, everything that you have mentioned there, Commissioner, depends on your vote. As you being a local commissioner, you understand the importance of voting and making sure you have commissioners and county commissioners in place to address these issues. When you're talking about, I like how you said the need to reform policing because so many times now they're saying defund policing. And when you hear that term defunding, that means in, in a literal sense, taking away the money. So no one wants to really get rid of all of the police department, put other people there, it's dealing with a reallocation of funds. And it's just like if you were dealing with your budget, if I look at your budget and I see where you spend your money, I can tell you what's most important to you. So when you're looking at the funding of the police departments and looking at where things are going, I think we need to look at some of the programs like we don't have anymore, like the DARE program. When the grants ran out, you lost the DARE program, which was in the fifth grade, which was your exit grade of elementary school. To where the kids are mostly there and they are strongly impacted by the police and how things happen. Also, with all these particular things, as a commissioner, as an elected official, it is your honor to connect with the community. I've worked with individuals out of Lotte Hill up there, it's Nadia Saj is running out there in Lotte Hill and some of the others, that they're looking at it and they're saying, we have to work together. We have to deal with the education of the community, we have to deal with our overall environment and the business. So when we work together, um, Commissioner McKenzie, when we work together, we fully engage the community and we get everybody to understanding by working together with law enforcement, making sure that we are voting, making sure we are serving on the jury, our entire community would be a much better place. And I'm saying, Robert McKenzie, I've been told that that is not the commissioner. Well, the, the one I'm dealing with is Robert McKenzie that's here with the thing, if he's not the commissioner, I was speaking it into existence.
Okay, can I, can I, can I add something to that, Dr. Salters? Uh, one of the things that, that pains me about the policing situation is, first of all, the whole word defunding scares people. That's the first thing. And, cause nobody, everybody wants to be able, able to tell the police, if police are there in real dire danger. That's the first thing. But here's the thing that amazes me. We call the police for social, social issues. We call the police for homelessness. We call the police for, uh, for everything. And what needs to happen is a transformation of the department and not so much defunding everything that they do. And I don't think that police should be called, uh, for instance, at the school, at, at schools. Why are we having policemen going in and handcuffing five-year-old kids when we have social workers? That's what social workers are for. Why are we using police officers, those, those, excuse me, doctor, those paid officers to go and arrest a five-year-old? Give me a break. That, this stuff is getting crazy. I think it does need to be totally transformed. And to, uh, uh, Mr. McKenzie's question, I do also, we have, we have to find a happy medium. But one of the things that bothers me, and I'm sure, I have to believe that eighty percent of the police force, they won't do the right thing. I have to believe that in order for me to survive. But that twenty percent is a mindset. And I think we, we, we gotta do more training because here's the thing you can't do. You can't legislate morality. I don't care how many policies we put in place, we cannot legislate morality. We have to get these people trained and get them maybe some empathetic training. But, uh, at the end of the day, we need to stop calling the police for every little thing. The man was asleep at the window, guys. Give me a break. He was asleep. Why are we calling, why didn't they come out and wake the man up? And that just makes that
Go ahead. Yeah, you, you hit it completely on the nail. Because that's, that's my thing. Had they caught a tow truck instead of a, instead of the police, that man would still be alive today. And I don't, and the thing is, I don't necessarily fault the business. I fought the police because they didn't, in that moment, they didn't see him as a human. And they didn't think that his life mattered. So when we say black lives matter, we're not saying that, we're not saying that white lives ma- don't matter. We're not saying blue lives don't matter, but we're saying that you guys don't see us as humans. So we need to tell you and emphasize that our lives matter. So, and that's all black lives. That's the Black Republican, heck, even Candace Owens' life, her, her life matters too. Might not agree with the system, but her life matters too. So that, and that's where, that's what I, and we, I think we get tripped up on the word defund, which I do believe that we need to find a new word. Because like Ms. Ruth said, why is it that we're calling the police officers for five-year-olds? And you have a five-year-old in cuffs, his, his wrist hasn't even fit the cuffs? Like, why are we calling the police, why are we calling the policemen on mental patients who need mental help? Instead of to be slammed on the ground? So I think that's, at times we get caught up in the word and I agree that we need to change the messaging and that we probably need to find a different word from defund. I think reform is a great word, but we do need reform.
I, I definitely agree with you that. I, I think that the police system does need to be reformed. When you say defund, you know, that's the big, that's the big word, that's, that's the big word that's going around right now. But I think if we, if we find some way to reform the police system, the whole police system, start from scratch. We've seen it done before. Start from scratch. Go through your training manuals and say, hey, what worked in nineteen ninety-three won't work in two thousand twenty. That's what we, that's, and that's where training comes into, into effect.
Let, let me
Go ahead, Bryce.
Let me, Bryce. Point is that must, when it comes to policing, there must be a higher standard that is set. Because there's no way that a teacher has to have a bachelor's degree and a police can have a GED or high school diploma going in. So there must be some type of standard that is set. And why is it that they are not in consistent audit? Okay, after you have gotten so many, uh, uh, cases and files against you, why are you not pulled in and asked, what is going on? Where is, where's the training? Where's?
Doc. I will address it.
Overall, uh, accountability piece. Uh, and I believe that's what we are missing when it comes to, to, uh, policing. We should not defund the police, but what we should do is allocate funds to pour back into the communities so that the police department has a relationship with the community.
And, and I'm glad you brought that question up, um. May I address this question on the training and the identification? Okay, I'm glad you brought that up because this is one of the problems I have as a law enforcement executive. Because when our police officers are out there in the community, they're doing things out there in the community. And if you've ever noticed, a bad cop doesn't do stuff around a good cop. They know where the good cops are and they would do things outside of them. We've seen instances that have been happening recently where there have been questionable things happening, officers have taken action all across the country. So now when you say, where is it? I'm looking for right now, when I come into the community, they'll tell me that somebody is a bad cop. I say, have you ever sent me an email to let me know? Have you sent me an email to let me know about an outstanding cop or a good cop? No, well, we figured y'all wouldn't do anything. Well, if you figured we wouldn't do anything and you give me nothing to do anything with, then you are absolutely correct. Nothing will be done. So what we're looking for is that engagement in the community to where we have that trust and we have that transparency. We're talking about procedural justice. We gotta have some transparency. We have to also give voice, we have to listen to the community. We also have to be impartial. So when we're doing things, so these are the things that we're looking to come together with the community to deal with. And to find out when there are officers that have certain things and they keep having things come up, then yes, we do have early warning systems in our internal affairs departments or our professional compliance areas in many agencies. But if the community sees stuff but doesn't do anything to let the agency know that he's been out there doing things or she's been doing things fifty times, we can't be held responsible for that. And I love to have these kind of discussions. We're gonna have some of these. And this is what all the law enforcement agencies want, more community engagement, engage with us, talk with us. We got the community, um, policing academies where you come in and you do things. We have our police explorers where you come in and do things. You can invite us to your homeowners meeting, you can invite us to your fraternity, your sorority, your Masonic, your Eastern Star meeting, your schools, invite us, we will come.
Yes.
So I, you know, Jeremiah, so I guess, what, what I hear all of us saying is okay, what I hear all of us saying is this, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, what I think all of us are saying is we need to talk to each other. We're not talking to each other, we talk at each other. So what I would like for us to start doing is for us to talk, have you guys talk to us and we just listen. Because I don't know it from your, your perspective. For one, I'm a female. I am not an African-American male, but my heart is there because I have kids. But we need to start having these consistent conversations. And that's what I would like to continue to do, uh, gentlemen and
Can you all
Ladies and gentlemen, it's hearing us. Huh?
I can't hear you.
Did you hear me? Can you hear me?
Jeremiah is trying to say that he can't hear us.
Right, Jeremiah, we can hear you.
We can hear you. We can hear you. But, so, and, and how do you guys feel about that particular point?
I would, I would say, I believe that
I have, I have no sound.
Okay, but we hear you.
But we hear you.
I can't
We can hear you.
Hear you guys.
He can't, I think what he's saying is he can't hear us.
Uh, log out and come back in.
Right. Log out and come back in.
Okay, and now, what you were saying, Bryce, go ahead.
Uh, uh, to, to allude to your point.
Go ahead.
I can't hear you guys, but you guys can hear me.
We, we are doing
I can't hear you.
We're doing more talking, we are listening.
Okay.
Uh, I believe that
Okay.
Be an ongoing, uh, discussion about these things. We need to have, uh, candid conversations about how we feel, what's going on in our communities and in, um, in our neighborhoods. Uh, and if we don't have that on a consistent basis, we'll always end up in the same places that we've been ending up.
And also, if you look, if you look at it, we overlook one big thing is that for us to really have influence on anybody, they must know us, like us and trust us. And a lot of times they don't know the police or sometimes they may know us and that's why they don't like us or trust us. And the same thing with other individuals in the community. We are out here saying, do they really know us? Do they like us and do they trust us? And then I also have one other thing here in the, um, chat, I have, um, Ms. Daman out of, oh, go ahead, Bryce.
So does it come down to going back to community policing? So that the community, those who is policing in their community and in their neighborhood?
Well, Reverend, I'm gonna throw it back on you. It's kinda like old time preaching, you know? It's like, were you really preaching to the community or were you just preaching to yourself? Because community-oriented policing is nothing but a new word on what policing used to be. They just put a name on it. But you look at how we've dealt with it and how we've grown over time. When you have community-oriented policing back when it started, that's because everybody was on a foot beat. Then they had the cars and they had the telephones that were out there, they had to check in. But then we got telephones and we got tenant windows and we got ACs and we got radios. So therefore individuals tended to get more distance from the people and just driving down the street with the windows up and the tenant windows up. So we do need to get more engaged with the community. That is one thing that we have to do. Let me read this question that we have here. The, um, Ms. Daman who's running down in Dade County, she was saying, referenced, um, in nineteen ninety, Nelson Mandela, um, the county mayor's denied Nelson Mandela the right to visit Miami because North Miami confirmed three international governmental officials agreed with him to end apartheid. So then you remember back then, that's when the, um, Black Lawyers Association boycotted the actions of the mayor's and Mandela was allowed to visit. and Mandela was allowed to visit. Now, when you look at that, that's setting in mind a tone and a culture of a particular area. So now the question that they ask is, can we really have a system change if same mindset are continually being put forward? My thing is is you have to touch the heart before you can touch the mind. And a lot of times, we have to show individuals what it is that we're all about. And when you're out there in the community, as um Ms. Lynch stated and others have stated, when you have a voting block, people will listen to that voting block. When you have some amount of influence, they will do that. Your vote is your voice. When you're in an area and they know that the people that you're dealing with are going to vote, they will listen to you more often. If you're somewhere and politicians are not coming there, that means they are not looking at you as that important.
And even and even to that, something that I wish that a lot of that we see a lot more in the African-American community. And I'm gonna frame this like this. There are three African-Americans in the Senate. That's a problem for me. We as we as African-Americans have to start running more, not just and I'm not saying, oh, go out there and run for president, but run for the city council seat. Run for that state rep seat. There are a lot of seats that that in the State House that are left unopposed. And that's I mean, that run unopposed. And that's because we don't have people who are running. If you want Black issues to get pushed up to the agenda, you have to be you have to have a black voice there.
Yes.
So that's nothing. We have. We can't see, but we can hear you.
Okay, I don't know what's going on with my video, but Jeremiah is is here.
We can hear you. To your to your point, to your point, Zion. Uh, I I totally agree with you. And I we would we would like to see more young people get involved in running for office, but here's one of that's just been and this full transparency for me. Here's one issue. We have communities here that are predominantly people of color. But we'll have one black seat
Mm-hmm.
in those communities. And black, everybody black is relegated to that one seat. Whatever the rules are and laws on the books are that causes that, we need to fix that. We need to look at why.
I agree with you one hundred percent. We have that. We have that in uh in Broward County. It's it's I'm sorry y'all can't see my face, but it's Jeremiah speaking.
That's okay.
Uh, thank you guys so much for uh continuing the conversation as I figure out these technical difficulties. But you're absolutely right about we need more people that look like us on some of these seats. And a prime example is our is our in Broward, our school board. Our school board only has uh is made up of nine people. And then and then one black person and what's so crazy is the the district that she covers is predominantly African-American. And this comes to my next point. There there are some and there's a way you can change that. We have to start, when they start saying, come to these planning and zoning meetings, you need to start going to those meetings. And I think personally, one most important seat besides the commissioners, one most important advisory board seats in the community is your planning and zoning advisory board. Yes, Bryce, I see your hand.
I wanna make a point to that. Uh, and the reason why I think we are having a problem with blacks in our communities because we don't want to run against the people who are quote-unquote our friend. And I I I just believe that that's where we are having sort of an issue. Um, and then to move to another point, the older generation of of those who are in position don't want to uh mentor those who are of the younger generation. And I believe that is also a problem.
Well, hence 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 hence, Bryce, that's what was this starts with us. It starts here. Mentoring is something that I've done all my life. And I understand because guess what? Everybody has an expiration date. Okay?
Absolutely.
And it's a crime and a shame that I should expire and not impart this knowledge to you all so you can carry the mantle. My problem with it is is that when we don't mentor our young people, it's they have to start from the beginning. And they don't get I my job is to give you access. And that's what we don't do. You know, if if one of the things that that when I was in corporate America, I spent thirty years in corporate America. And I was the diversity director of uh I was the director of diversity in emerging markets. Now, people have they throw that word diversity around. Let me just say this. We are diverse. Diverse is what we are. We they we we're about the most diverse county in the United States of America. We can't get any more divorce diverse. But here's our problem. Our problem is inclusion. We don't in we're not included in the process. And the sad part about it is, when a lot of us get there, Doc, and cor- correct me if I'm wrong, we don't include us either. So the for me, I I make a promise to you all today. One, you can have you have access to Ruth Carter Lynch. You can go to my website and get all my information. Whatever I can do and any door I can open for you, I will ma- making a point to tell you that that would happen with me.
And she and she's telling the truth about that. Ms. Lynch is someone.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth, for that.
Ms. Lynch is telling the truth about that when she.
And and I think that that's what and that's what and to part of what Bryce said, where we're scared to run against our friends. But also to what you said, where a lot of times we don't feel that way. We don't feel like, oh, we can go to the elders. And something I do want to say, it wasn't always like that. Because Martin Luther King could go to his father and go to his elders and get the advice same. And that's how we that's how a lot of people have come up. Reverend Al Sharpton came up came up that way. Reverend Jesse Jackson, these all of these big pioneers, but somewhere it got lost.
Yes.
And I think it became a power, a a power struggle where, oh, I don't want to give this power up because this is this is what this is all I have. This is my this is what having that honorable in front of me, having that that the honorable congressman, something in front of me in front of my name is my power. And I don't want to give that up. I don't want to pass the mantle down, though it's time to do it, though I'm dying out. I don't want to pass the mantle down. So even where we have AOCs who have to come and take it now. And I think that that's that's the thing in our in our community, especially in young black people and young people that I've been around, where's where sometimes we're afraid to take it, but when we do take it, we're seen as disrespectful.
And let me try.
So how do you how do you hear that?
Yeah, let me chime back in.
Yeah, well, here's what I would like to say about that.
Ms. Ruth, I think that um
Right.
Jeremiah had something he wanted to add.
Jeremiah?
Yes, let me just.
Okay, go ahead, Jeremiah.
I thank 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 you all for continuing the conversation as the moderator, as so bad that the moderators have technical difficulties. But I thank you all for um uh and continuing the conversation. But definitely what Zion said about mentorship. Mentorship is very important because we have these people that are in these seats for a long time. And they have to pass the mantle. They have because we don't want to wait till you die in your seat. And there is a congressman in particular, I'm not gonna name him, that said he gonna die in that seat. And I don't think that should be the way. Ms. Lynch laughed because she know who I'm talking about. Bryce laughed because y'all know who I'm talking about. Y'all know who I'm talking about. And um it's so crazy and it shouldn't it shouldn't be that way. It shouldn't be that way. You should be nurturing that next person and say, hey, I see you from a distance. I think you 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 thinking about running for something in the future? You 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 wanna come alongside of me and let me see if if you would like this. Come come work in my office and let me show you the word ropes. Because you see all this? I have to pass this along to somebody else. I can't hold this torch for too long. I can't take this torch with me when I go. You have to pass this torch on. So I agree with y'all when you all say uh mentorship. Everyone can hear me clearly?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I can't show I can't show the cam. I don't know what's going on my front cam, but I have a little picture there. So that's the best I can do.
Not a problem.
But Dr. Salters, I have I have a question for you, Dr. Salters. Um, because it's so it's so crazy how we it's so crazy how we met. I met Dr. Salters through being involved in the community. So where did your passion for being involved in the community come from?
Well, I you have to look at it and look at where people come from. It's very interesting when you talk about it in this election season. Because some individuals that are politicians, if you Google them, most of their work didn't start until after they started deciding they were gonna run for office and they have no history behind them of community service. But to answer your question with me, I can remember when I was eight years old and my parents joined the church, they had to get me out of the cradle roll because I was helping in the cradle roll with the babies before they could join the church. And I've always looked at giving and kind of like my hashtag success is options. I have to look at it because so many times in my professional life and in my life in general, I've been hit. And a lot of times, like when you're playing football, the quarterback will get hit, but if you pass the ball off or throwing it off to somebody else, the team still wins. So when I'm saying hashtag success is options, that's working in the community, developing individuals in the community. So when I get hit, I pass the ball off to other individuals that the community can continue to grow. So that is truly my passion. And I wouldn't be where I am if I were not for certain people being in my life and pouring into me. And I've seen how it works for me. So that's what I do now. I just pour it into everybody else that is trying to go places. And my favorite art is he ain't heavy, he's my brother, with the brother reaching down and the other one reaching up. That says, when you've made it to the top, you have to reach down. And the other part of that is if you are down on the bottom and you have not gotten to where you need to get, you need to take your hand out of your pocket and be prepared to go to that next level. Then we can go there. That's why I'm out there in the community making things happen.
Well, I was born into it. I didn't have a choice. I was born into it. My grandmother, um, I had to I remember telling and why voting is so is a personal thing with me. Uh, when Dr. King and Congressman John Lewis and Stokely Carmichael and those people came to my hometown when I was sixteen years old, and we had to go out there and march with them. Because the seniors, they 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 had done their job, right? So here's the deal. It's not about us. It's about our brothers and sisters doing what we can to make things better for them. And that when that even when you're running for office, it can't just be about you. It has to be about wanting to make things better for the masses. Okay, and that's what we have to pass down to you all. I had to take my grandmother, I'm gonna tell this little quick story for you guys and get how passionate I am about voting. I had to take my grandmother to the to the courthouse fifteen times before they would give her her voting. And I at the about the tenth time, I was kind of, you know, because I'm seventeen now and I gotta think I know everything because I'm graduating from high school. So I want to say, well, why are you taking this? And she told me, you just be quiet and you just follow me. We go outside and I said, why you keep going there? She said, you have to understand. I'm gonna wear her down. I'm if it takes me twenty-five, thirty times, I'm gonna go and get my voting card. And the last time she went back and when she got it, she said to her, uh, and I'm not gonna call her name because she might be still living. She then I'll never forget her name. She said, thank you so much for being so patient with me. When you all know that that was true voter suppression from the word go. But she taught me a lesson. You have to stand and you have to keep going. You guys gotta keep fighting. I want you guys to keep fighting because I don't want this protest to turn into a parade.
I agree. I agree.
I want this protest to turn into something that's tangible, that we can move forward like we do, like we have done. And let me just tell you something. The what we did is the reason why you guys can do what you're doing now.
Yes.
And we got to join hands with you. And we have to lead you. And we have to stand in the
Yes.
gap for you. But we guess what? I don't mind being your having your holding up your wings. I don't mind holding up the wings and letting you guys fly. I really do. And that's what we have to do. And I think that's what you're asking for.
And I'm reminded by something uh when you when you say that. Uh, one of my favorite songs, one of my favorite songs.
That's and I think that you hit it on the nail. Um, and thank you for that.
Hey, and Jeremiah is speaking now. Jeremiah, you have to speak up just a little bit because we couldn't hear that you were talking, man.
Can you all can you all hear me now? Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll I'll project the voice a little louder. Um, and one one of the things I'm reminded of with this is is a is a songwriter said these words, uh, if I can help somebody as I pass along, if I can cheer somebody with the word our song. If I can show somebody that he's traveling wrong, then my living shall not be in vain. And that's what and and as you as you talk about that and mentoring, we all have a duty. We all have a charge and we have to keep that charge. Now, that's the baptism coming out of me. Uh, but we all have we all we all have a duty. I'm not gonna lie, I know him, but we all have a duty. And we have to, young, you know, we we young people, we have to step up to the plate. Our time is now. Our time is now. We cannot wait. We can't the people, the the our 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 older generation, they can't wait any longer. They can't hold on to that seat any longer. Stop waiting for the next uh, Dr. Martin Luther King. Stop waiting for the next Malcolm X. Stop waiting for the next John Lewis. Because they if you if you go and watch them, everyone has still so much in you. You, if you look at yourself, Zion is the next person. Bryce is the next person. I'm the next person. London is the next person. We are that voice and we have to be able to say, I'm not afraid to step up to that mantle. And um, I I thank you all so much for this uh great conversation. Uh, because we all come from different backgrounds. We all come from different backgrounds. Uh, we see the generational um we see the generational gap here. Uh, and but we all have the same message. We all have the same message. Get involved, play your.
How about we call it generational connection? How about we call it, let's rename it, guys? Generational connection. That's the thing. That's let's let let us rename it. Call it a generational connection. Bryce, you was getting ready to say something.
That's 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 correct. I was just make a point with what you were saying. And what I've been saying about this whole time. Protesting has gotten the attention. But we must get organized.
Yeah.
The uh like like yourself, Ms. Ruth, that um you can get us those who are willing to the table uh to talk with some of these people a- and make a greater change.
Yes, yes, yes. And uh one one final one final point as we uh prepare to uh wrap this up. And this question goes to, uh, I'm gonna answer this question and then I'm gonna let uh Dr. Salters and Ms. Ruth answer this question. But primarily, this question is for her the three youngest people on here is how can we as young people use our platform that we have to get those that say, you know, how can we use our platform to reel in those and say, hey, after the protest, we gotta get organized. I understand you protest like Malcolm and I understand you protest like Martin, but we gotta meet in the middle. How can we use our platform to fuel the next big change? Uh, Bryce, go ahead and answer that.
Uh, I believe that we must remain uh consistent in our and number two, we must remain involved in the protests that are going on with that same message. And so it's all con- it's all the part of youth influence. Um, because you have those who are protesting but have no guide. And so those of us who have that leadership and have that structure can use our voice, our platform to guide uh those who don't have it. Now, that that is a major point and a major key is to keep our platform as it is and help those who don't have that.
Zion, go ahead and answer.
And also, we have to and something that a lot of people forget is you can't just and some people I always say, you can't just protest. You have to also make sure that you show up to the polls and make your voice heard that way also. That's another thing. We have all these protesters out here. We have all these people out here. But are you registered to vote?
Yes.
Are you? Do you know who's running in your city? Do you know who's running for in your state? But I hope that only I hope that if only. But I hope that, oh, I hope that if only half those people that were out there for that protest went and voted in the Georgia primary, we would see, we would have had a lot of different results.
Yes.
If half those people that were out there for that protest would have voted for Stacey Abrams, we would have had a different result.
Yes, yes.
So I think that also we have to get from the mindset of, and I do, I do understand, yes, we have some things happening due to these protests, but we also, that's not all, we need more. And I think that we have to get out of the mindset of the short-term gratification that we're getting and get into the long-term gratification that we're gonna get also for our children, our grandchildren and stuff like that.
I agree one hundred, I agree with you one hundred percent. Um, and, uh, as a, as a closing, everyone, I just want everyone, whoever's watching this live, remember the Florida, uh, primary elections in August is gonna be very big, please pay attention to these races, not only in Broward County, uh, Bryce is in Palm Beach and, and then these races in Miami as well. We have some people that are running for these seats that you need to ask them the questions on what are they gonna do? And Ms. Lynch is one of those people, she is, like I said before, this is a nonpartisan dialogue. Um, and, uh, but Ms. Lynch is a candidate for, uh, office, I did see a few people on the live stream uh, that are candidates for office, uh, but please, reach out to those people and, and ask them, what are they gonna do for you? You know, what are they gonna do for me and what are they gonna do for my family? Uh, definitely in Broward, pay attention to the supervisor of elections race, the sheriff's race, the public defender's race, and the state attorney's race, especially state attorney, because that is an important, that is an important seat. Uh, any closing remarks, I want to give you all a chance to just give some closing remarks and then I'll close it out.
Uh, Ms. Lynch, I'll relinquish to you and I'll go after you.
Okay, you know, one thing, gentlemen, I want you to, Jeremiah, make sure everybody has all of my contact information. Because I'm available to you guys whenever you need for whatever you ask. And I will, and then I'm willing to listen, let me just say that, because I don't have the keys to the gates, okay? I want to listen and to know what it is that you need. And again, I am running, and look, thank you all so very much, this is so, so important. And I hope that this is not our last one. And like he said, I am running for supervisor of elections for Broward County. I would like to ask both of you to, to try to get as many millennials registered to vote as possible. And if you want me to come and talk to them, I'll be more than happy at any given time. So again, thank you all so much, and if you want the truth, you vote for Ruth.
Alrighty, now with that in mind, I want to just tell you all, when you're asking how do we deal with the millennials and where do you use your platform? I will throw credit out there to two strong institutions that have made a tremendous impact in my life, FAMU and Alpha Phi Alpha. For many of y'all, y'all may have seen the movie Stomp the Yard. And if you remember in there, they had that scene where it was the old school guys and the new school guys trying to compete and see who was the best. And was it better new school or old school, and at the end of the day, they looked at both sides had tremendous things to offer. And when they came together and they had that neo soul and that blend, it's when they won. It's not gonna be all done by millennials, it's not gonna all be done by old folk, but when we get together and we connect with each other, we can get out there and make some things happen. I am Dr. Gregory Salters and you all have just been seasoned for success. I am here to help everybody get to wherever they want to be, I want to help you get from where you are to where you want to be. I'm here and I'll be listing my information for contact.
Go ahead Zion, tell us how we can, uh, reach you.
Thank you guys for this, um, I, I'll also be listing my contact information. Um, and don't forget that we have to make sure that we not only show up, but we vote out the people who aren't representing us. Um, so yes, thank you.
Go ahead Bryce.
I'm Bryce Graham, um, I'll also be posting my, uh, contact information and I just wanted to say thank you. Uh, Jeremiah for having this, this conversation, this dialogue which is greatly needed. Um, and I think it should be a continuation. And, uh, I want to say to those who are, who are watching and listening, uh, get out and be a part of the change, uh, that you want to see in your community.
Well, thank you all, I thank you all so much for, uh, engaging in this conversation in spite of the technical, uh, difficulties. But you all kept the conversation going, and that was my job primarily as the moderator, is to give other people a chance to just, to speak and share their views. So thank you, thank you to the public, those who watched, those who submitted questions, I thank you so much. Uh, I thank my supporters for, um, for listening to this, thank you Zion, thank you Bryce, thank you Ms. Lynn. Thank you Dr. Salters, my fellow FAMU, uh, my fellow FAMUly, uh, Florida A M.
Well, when is it, when is the date for our next one?
Uh, I, well, I don't have a date for the next one yet. Um, once, I'm gonna probably figure that out soon, I do want to do another one, I may, uh, the next one will probably be a forum with some candidates that are running for office, hint, hint. So, uh, those that may be running for the state attorney, uh, SOE in Broward Sheriff, you might wanna, you might receive an email from me because I think we should continue this. And, uh, I'll definitely have Dr. Salters help me out on the tech side as well, because, uh, I appreciate him for, uh, getting this thing going for us. So, but if anybody has any other questions after this stream, this stream will be available for your, for your usage, share it. And feel free to send me a message, or Bryce a message, or Zion a message, or Ms. Lynch a message, and we'll be more than happy to answer it for you. Once again, remember to, uh, speak out against injustice, uh, serve your community, love on your fellow brother, and we shall overcome, thank you guys.
Thank you, good night y'all, good night.